Well, revised draft based on the last discussion we had in late February. The date I have is just, it happens to be today's date. She sent it about two weeks ago. And the idea was if the people in the meantime had any questions or concerns or ideas for additional revisions, they could bring that up. I know that Rob mentioned to me earlier this week that he was concerned whether or not that this covered the townhouse situation in the sense of with townhouses where, you know, you have one house, two house, three house, four house, all jammed together, but would that be covered under this? No one else had contacted me during the intervening weeks. Doesn't mean we can't talk about other parts of the draft, but I wanted to start off with Rob since he's the one who had brought something to me during the week.
Yes, so Charlie, I have some concerns as far as definitions. When I talked to him earlier about townhouses, I don't want to run into issues where you could possibly have a special permit for multifamily zoning that conflicts with the building code. So a townhouse, basically the definition of a townhouse is three units that's all being open on two sides. But I don't want to run, I think we should at least have a definition of a townhouse in the latest law so that we don't have a special permit being granted for something that falls outside of that purview.
So the idea would be that inside the multifamily definitions would also, townhouses would count towards this? In the sense of townhouse would be simply another form of multifamily?
Yes, I guess you could look at it that way. My concern again is the distinction between multifamily condominiums and vice versa. And I think they could be the same thing, but I don't want to run into an issue where we may have something. And again, I have been to the past meetings trying to correct my head around what we've got so far. So based on what I'm seeing, it appears to me that if we have a duplex or multifamily, if there's more than one building on one single lot, that it has to be 10 acres or more. Is that be correct? And then it limits it to four units on 10 acres?
Limits of four units in one building. You still go with, I think, I don't know if it's 40,000 per unit or one acre per unit, but the maximum size, you can't have more than four units in a building. You can have roughly, let's say it's 10 acres, you can have 10 units. So you could have a 4-4-2, you could have a 3-3-4, you know, whatever combination of buildings with units, but no more than four in one building. And of course, you could scale up if you have more acres.
That would increase with the acres that comes along, but I'm not sure we are allowed.
Yes. But you devote a certain amount of square footage in that to say, okay, you've got a two-unit here building, you have to devote a certain number of square feet to that two-unit. You've got a three-unit, it's more. You have four units, it's more. You still may not add up to exactly 10 acres or something, but you'll have sufficient square footage of upland, contiguous upland devoted to each of those buildings.
So based in that scenario, if we're limiting the units to four within a building, I'm not saying we still don't have a definition, but I think that a townhouse would fall outside of that purview. Typically, you'll run into a problem with a townhouse definition when you have six units. You have two that are sandwiched in between and you don't have two open sides. So, you know, I can defer to Amy on LCC's any issues as far as the definition is concerned.
So couldn't, if you had a four-unit townhouse, the two units in the middle, wouldn't they be open in the front and back?
Correct. Two open on two, so the definition would be open on two sides.
Or at least two sides. Right, because the N-units would be open on three sides.
That's no problem to put in. What I think we should probably, with dwelling multifamily in that definition, we can say and shall include townhouses which shall be defined as, and then we can define it in parts of the building code.
Another thing that I have concerns with, and I don't know if it's in this new, this new bylaw, I think we should at least have a definition of an apartment also within some new bylaw.
So is an apartment different than dwelling unit?
An apartment can, is a dwelling unit, but an apartment...
I just want to say I'm really proud of all the employees for working as hard as they have and all the volunteers and all the board members. I don't think that we post as much time as we've been spending for the last week on various issues. I just think the public should know.
And a shout out to Charlie too. He's taken on a whole new challenge here on top of everything else he does. He was here at 5:30 in the morning.
Isn't a single-family dwell?
So the definition of dwelling unit that is currently in your bylaw, I want to see, it says, currently it says one or more living or sleeping rooms arranged for the use of one or more individuals living as a single housekeeping unit with permanent provisions for cooking, living, sanitary, eating, and sleeping facilities. And essentially, we kept the same definition. So an apartment would fall into dwelling unit?
It's a subset, but I think your concern, Rob, is how does that differentiate from a...
They should define it as a dwell.
Right.
So typically, let's take for example, we've got a building with eight units that are all apartments. Those aren't eight single-family dwellings, even though they define as a dwelling unit. But again, they're separate from a single-family dwell.
But this doesn't say though, single-family. This says dwelling unit.
This is dwelling unit, and I understand that. Maybe it doesn't belong in this purview, but what I'm saying is I'd like to see a distinction somewhere in our bylaw between a single-family dwelling and an apartment.
So I didn't think we were going to allow apartments other than to call them a dwelling unit.
So we know we're allowing two families. Is one of those two an apartment?
Well, if they've been separated as units into condominiums, then they're not a single-family dwell.
What happens if it's a two-family that's not a condominium? In a sense of, we've got definitions for two-family that are separate from the multifamily developments in that you can have a two-family structure that's simply on its own lot and its own thing. It doesn't have to be part of a multifamily. The owner, I guess you could have a two-unit condo on that one lot for those two units. You also could have one owner for both units and the owner rents one or both, for that matter, of those two units.
So, and again, a question to Amy, so if, for example, if we have, this called a townhouses, and they're three units and they're D-ed out individually into individual deeds, by D, I would consider that a single-family dwell?
It wouldn't be a single-family, Charlie, because they are connected.
But again, this is where it becomes difficult for me because they're connected. So do we have a definition for an attached single-family dwelling and detached single-family dwell?
Well, an attached...
Isn't that one, Amy, isn't that one dwelling, comma, multifamily?
Or two-family, it could be either one. So we have single-family, we have dwelling detached single-family showing a dwelling containing not more than one dwelling unit. So that's it.
Yeah, it's on page two at the bottom of the page.
And we have dwelling two-family slash duplex, which is showing a single building containing two dwelling units. And then we have multifamily showing a single building containing at least three dwelling units, but not more than four. So you cannot have more than four dwelling units in this town.
So to Gordon's point, so by definition and separation, to your point, apartments would not be allowed in this town?
No, they would be.
There would be a dwelling unit, which they would be allowed, because there's no, in this, there's no size limit on the units. So for example, if you, if you wanted to have, if you wanted to have, if you just had a two-family and you had two units, you have to have 40,000 square feet. If you want to have four units, you have 160 square feet. So there's no real definition as to the actual size of the unit. That's more of an in-law that we are also going to tackle, but not right now. With an in-law, what we want to do with an in-law is we want to restrict the size of the unit to a portion, either a square footage or a portion of the size of the actual dwelling, to keep it as an apartment, as an in-law.
So I guess my question to you is, do you feel we should have a definition of an apartment? Or do you feel that it falls into this purview without the definition?
Well, sorry. Well, an apartment, basically, in my head, common is somebody's renting the apartment. I mean, you could technically own an apartment, you know, if you're in Boston, but they call those condominiums. If you own them, if you own an apartment, it's a condo in the condo building or maybe it's some other form of ownership, but maybe you rent them out, who knows? But the only difference between the apartment and the condo is whether there's a rental situation or not. I mean, most people, right.
Because you can, an apartment, you can have six apartments in one building under one owner.
Yes, yes.
And that's on six different...
Just as you could have for...
...in separate ownerships.
Right, but you could have two, you could have a two-family that is, both of the, both units are rented out. The owner does not live there. It's no different than the apartment building of six, it's simply the number of units. So...
And I agree with you. What you can also have a D-ed out as separate.
But then you've got a condo or some equivalent ownership situation. So when we're saying apartment, it's really, there's no difference. It's being used, it's being used as living quarters. There may be or may not be a rental arrangement between the person living there and the person owning there, but in terms of the actual use of the build, of the structure, there's no difference.
And again, I'm not, you know, I agree with you. It's just, I've looked at some of the towns and they tend to have the definition of apartment in there. Maybe to curb some fury...
I think it's because they're older. I think we're better off not having a definition of an apartment. So for example, if there's a special permit for a multifamily development and one facet of that multifamily development is a two-unit building. So one unit with two, one building with two units in it. If for some reason down the road, all of a sudden that has three units because somebody created an apartment within that unit, you would go in and say, you now have three dwelling units, you have to rip out one of your dwelling units. It's all units, it's not, and you have an apartment, you don't have an apartment. There's no real...
And that's how they define it, a dwelling unit in either a two-family or a multifamily dwell.
Right. So, but I, we wouldn't want to call it, we wouldn't want to distinguish between an apartment and a dwelling unit because you're only allowed two dwelling units. If you only have 40,000 square feet, you can only have two dwelling units. You can't have two dwelling units plus an apartment or you can't have one dwelling plus an apartment. I think we want to keep it kind of streamlined.
I just don't want to argue with you.
So with, when it comes, I know this isn't part of the discussion, but when it comes to the in-law apartments, the way that we're doing it is not legal right now to be...
It's not an in-law, right.
Because they're not, you can't really restrict the number of kitchens or bathrooms that somebody has. And if they're living with family, it's still, they're living with their family.
And again, that's a good point, and my determination would be it would all have to be contained within a single-family dwell. Because once you have dwelling units separation, where does it become two units, two dwelling units?
So are you talking about if it becomes like a detached, put grandma in the back in a different building?
Well, the fact is, we're all, we're all within the same family, we're living within a single-family dwell. Whether you have two kitchens or not.
But that's going to require shared space, you're not, no wall separation. People can walk in and out of the entire house without going through something to get to the other piece of the house.
The biggest, the biggest thing with an in-law is the size of the apartment. The size has to be limited to make it an in-law, and then again, the whatever...
Well, yeah, we call it an apartment, we call it...
Yeah, then we get trapped in the semantics thing.
But if, well, we got the size limitation, huh?
Right, but the apartment, I'm sorry.
You have a pretty long provision about having...
Well, it kind of mixes together.
Right, well, an apartment is small, it's always defined as an apartment.
As an in-law.
But pretty common to make.
Yeah, and so either an in-law or an accessory apartment. I think push-on, key-down, accessory apartments for workforce housing. The way that those are defined is different from a dwelling unit because they're limited in size. It's usually a percentage of the single-family dwelling, but sometimes it starts with a two.
So again, we're talking an accessory apartment.
Exactly.
So it should be an accessory dwelling, because we're not defining apartment.
But we would, in the in-law, but here we're not, because there's no difference between an accessory apartment or an accessory dwelling. You still have to have the right, you still have to have 120 square feet if you want formal. So you can't build one building, you know, with a huge living space and then three tiny apartments unless you have 160. So, but that would be up to the developer as to the size. We're not limiting the size of the unit.
So Rob, is your comment more that then somebody could go for an apartment on each one of those units?
Well, I'm concerned across the board. So our problem with in-law apartments, and I think they're a fantastic thing, they allow people some financial reasons to move into a single-family dwell. But to try and monitor these, and again, you know, shared living space, openings at a certain size, when does a single-family dwelling becoming a two-family dwell?
Immediately.
It's the use typically, whether it's being used as it or not. But again, if we're saying, well, you can have your family in this house, you know, you have to have a six-foot opening, this, that, and the other thing. And I'm not looking to be the future police or any of that stuff, because if they're in violation, they're in violation.
But I think the idea is, as Amy said, we're concentrating on this. The in-law is a subject that's ripe for revision. I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that. I think that'll be the next thing to get done.
There's no landing area required in prison law. You don't have to be first in the family. As long as, right, so here, every time you add a unit, you need one round. So that's not the case with an in-law. If you add a unit, you don't need one round.
It gets complicated because the way we've been handling them is to have, not really have separation. You have free flow between them. It's really not, it's not a separate unit. And that's where it gets kind of confusing.
And that also somewhat goes against the whole purpose of an in-law, which is to allow family members to...
To have some separate space.
Live with them, but be independent.
Well, then it becomes a two-family in my...
But we would place, you know, if we went down that road, we'd be saying, here's the 2020 version of an in-law, which is you have, you can't have the shared space. Maybe we said separate utility buildings, maybe we put in requirements, it can't be larger than a certain size, and then it's got to be a certain relative configuration. It can't be your third cousin.
Make it the obvious, yeah, a separate dwelling unit, a two-family. When we deal with it later, that's my argument for later.
So can we include in this that there'll be no in-law apartments allowed?
Again, unless they have the square footage, they couldn't put them in under this.
But could we note that so it's...
So in the future?
So, so under the multifamily development, that no...
So that would only come in for a multifamily development that's going to be created with single-family homes? Because your in-laws are only allowed in a single-family home. So an in-law would not be allowed in a duplex or a multifamily four-story?
So I'm just saying, shouldn't we note that?
Yeah, we can, but we would have to, we would limit it to single-family homes, because it's not allowed anyway.
Then it's going to become a horror show trying to define it, because it doesn't have a separate entrance and it just has a separate kitchen and you've got it approved for five bathrooms as opposed to three bathrooms. I mean, you've effectively got...
Two kitchens in a five-bedroom house.
But effectively you have, right, legally, but effectively you've got a two-family. So, or in-law.
Right, so the definition of dwelling unit, because the definition of dwelling unit is occupier, it's a building or part of a building occupying suitable for occupancy of the residents and arranged for the use of one or more individuals living as a single housekeeping unit with its own cooking, living, sanitary, and sleeping facilities. So if you add a kitchen with a bedroom and bathroom, you're adding a property unit. The problem is the building code allows you to do that.
Oh no, exactly, that's where the conflict is.
We have to make sure in here, that's why we have the definition dwelling that we have. So I guess...
Just one more question to Rob's point. Are these definitions that we're using going to be just under the multifamily? And we're going to have another section of defined terms at a higher level? So these would replace those?
The way that they are now is the way that we track the bylaw currently with the definitions. So, but I did put them in this section. I think our goal was to put these definitions in the definitions section, not in the multifamily section.
Okay, it might be useful to, under the multifamily section, point out these definitions apply. So there's no confusion over what the...
Put them separately?
Or just report them? I mean, I'm making it up.
Yeah, I would recommend putting them separately, because then Rob can't go after somebody saying, you have a single-family house and you created an illegal dwelling.
I guess I'm just saying, like, these terms apply, these definitions apply under multifamily and list out the ones that we're, we're having issues with.
So, Amy.
You know what I mean, just like...
No, I know. So basically, right at the beginning where we have the definitions, the following definitions, condo, dwelling, dwelling detached, single-family, as shown in Chapter 167, Section 3, definitions shall apply.
Question. You put distinct statute here about denying a person to have an in-law apartment.
So there is really nothing in the state building code that would deny anybody from having an in-law apartment, provided that you can show two means of access or express...
Well, yeah, this is where it gets confusing for me.
It comes to two-family definition.
Yeah, if it's a single-family dwelling, they only need two exits.
Right.
So at what point, if it becomes a two-family dwelling, now they need four exits. So the whole shared living space becomes the issue. And there's other factors, you know, so somebody goes and sells this home, they turn this in-law apartment into another dwelling unit. There's other areas of the code. You need separation from fire, I mean, between the firewall, I mean, so there's a whole gamut. I mean, the fact that they, that they're violation of their special permit, so they're in violation.
Right.
But for me to determine, this is where it becomes tricky. At what point I go in there and say, oh, this person's related to me? You know, how do I make a determination whether they're related or not related within the same family unit or... When does the use become a violation?
So most in-law apartments require an affidavit of the owner, that it's owner occupied and that the person living in the in-law is a family member. I can tell you that there's many, many towns that have gotten away from in-law apartments and they just have accessory use, they just have accessory dwelling units, which again, are, they are in-laws, but they do not have to be related. So that solves your problem.
So accessory dwelling, upon the apartment, now the building code kicks in. It's a, it's no longer a single-family dwell. It's two units, they have five separation, they have four means of access, they have...
So I'm not sure the building code does kick in because of the size of the unit? Because the size of the unit has to be a limited size?
But the size wouldn't have anything to do with the building, if it has a minimum living here.
So you have an apartment, you have an accessory apartment. That's exactly what the zoning bylaw would say. It doesn't make it a two-family house. It makes it a single-family house with an accessory dwelling.
But we're talking about multifamilies now, so we're not going to have them at all in the multifamily.
No.
But that's what I just wanted to note.
I understand.
Because I don't want to go through for you to take...
For in-law, yeah.
I'm fine with that. I just want to know where we stand as far as what we're talking about. Because there's going to be confusion on the other end also.
So Tom's point, can we just note in the multifamily bylaw, no accessory apartments allowed? Just as a note?
In a single-family dwelling?
No, under the multifamily...
I think, I think there's a worry that somehow, someday, somebody is going to try and glom an additional accessory unit onto one of the condos in the two or three or four. And the idea, and the idea is, no, you can't do that, and it needs to be explicit in the bylaw.
So that would be a new general requirement, because we're going to have to make it across the board. So we'll do a number eight.
People get creative. I had an instance where two families are allowed as a right and somebody decided to put an addition on, then before you knew it, it was an accessory apartment. So now we had three dwelling units in this thing. So we have to get specific.
So now he's saying that...
I was going to do number eight under, right, before Steve, I'm going to create a number eight that says, no in-law apartments or accessory dwelling units are allowed in a multifamily.
And it's under special permit, right?
Yes.
So you can actually put conditions, even if they maybe conflict with the two kitchen thing or with the one kitchen thing, or numerous kitchen things. Can you limit it because it's a special permit?
Yeah.
We could put that language into a special permit, right?
Well, you're better off putting it in the bylaw right off.
No, no, I understand, but I'm just making sure you could do it at all. I think that solves part of the problem, because it's really the kitchen that becomes the big thing.
Well, I think the argument would be all of the functions could meet the definition of dwelling unit.
No, I understand, but...
If one of those functions doesn't meet the definition of dwelling unit, and like you said, people are very creative.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Obsessive.
There's no stove, there's this, you can't, I don't...
That 30-inch opening there is just there. You're not really ever planning to put a stove there.
As soon as the stove goes in there, violation.
Yeah.
Now, I guess, of course, technically you are.
Need four and then we're going to turn it off. I forgot mine at home, so maybe no, we are waiting for textbooks to come in.
Any other questions?
I have the general requirements, number two, the two kitchens, dwellings, and ten units. Two kitchens dwelling, which is a more, you know, complex, correct?
Yes. So if you have, you could have a two-family on a 40,000-square-foot lot and that's all...
On a number two, so it's two kitchens dwelling, it's also requiring ten units. So two families, general or a multifamily dwelling?
A general. So you want that just to say multifamily developments?
But the reason why I said two-family was to try to allow them to, two four units and a two. So the reason why I said two-family was because if the smallest number of buildings you could do, 10 units, would be two fours and one two.
Right, that's what conflicted me, because the two families allowed, not...
No, he's right, because B2 covers all, both two-families and multifamily developments. We only said the 10, because right now, someone can build, as long as they get a special permit, a plain two-unit dwelling.
So how do you allow, I guess, for that two-unit?
It's the definition of multifamily developments. If you go up and say it shall...
And you, you know, instead of general requirements under B2, you move that to D and put it, you know, put the 10 acres in that. Does that make, can that work, Amy?
Yeah, definitely. I have enough to look at. And then, so Gordon, did you look at number four with your... And then, so Gordon, did you look at number four with regard to, I just want to make sure that all your concerns are addressed there with regard to the planning boards?
Which page are we talking about?
B, B4, yeah.
Okay.
General...
Okay, got it, yeah.
That was the planning board. This is my written comments.
Should it match the 40 days that you get for a subdivision?
It's up to you guys. 35 days was probably from an example that I saw, so it's...
It's 40 in the subdivision, just to make it match?
The problem there is that, well, no, you're, so the special permit, you have 65 days in the limit, so...
I mean, 35 days is a lot of time to read that, Amy.
Generally, generally, the planning board will have had two meetings within that 35-day space, so...
Don't get so involved with you.
Okay, it's not a problem.
It's kind of following the hit, it's sort of the update and some of the...
Okay, it works.
Nobody need to shoot family, they go along with family structure, number four dwellings. You can't put four dwellings in a two-family, it's only two dwellers, correct?
Which number you on?
Number five. I think they're saying that you should do more than two dwellings. So you can have a duplex in, it's called a quad, but you can't have more than four dwellings within one building.
Correct. A two-family, now it has to be a tenacious.
And then, I guess, for the second sentence, where it says the architectural theme, that is where I should add two-family, right? Here, the architectural theme, this says a multifamily structure, same thing in number five.
The second sentence.
Right, we want the two families to look the same.
It says no building should be floodwood. What is that? Yeah, assuming from...
They want to be a tax, you want a light out here.
Yeah, shitting on the buildings.
Onto the building, not off of the building towards the driveway? So from the building to the driveway is okay?
Yes.
From the driveway to the building is not okay?
Correct. So floodlights are usually, they're usually on the ground and they go away, they create light pollution.
Okay.
Not to be confused with post-lamps or...
Right, those are all fine. And zones are under 15 feet. That's what we have here.
Okay.
They have to be shielded and not higher than 15 feet. And that's basically for light pollution.
Okay.
Please say it. You probably do that in a site plan and...
So under the same, I would say, single structure, two-family, is that part of the multifamily development?
It can be in it, or it doesn't have to be. So you can have a two-family on 40,000, on 40,000 square foot lot, provided you have 150 feet frontage.
But you have to...
Yeah, that's, that's the longer...
You have to be a multifamily development section.
Where's, which one? Six?
C, something.
Seems out of place.
No, C is here because you can have a two-family, you turn, you go over here to the 40,000, you got rid of, you made it spread.
Right, so we're saying, so you can have a two-family with 40,000 square feet outside of the multifamily development.
Yes.
So should that be in, but it's confusing.
No, no, it doesn't belong there. Because, because...
We can...
Because we've, right now, our current bylaw allows for a two-family by itself on 40,000 square feet with 150 feet of frontage. Then for multifamily, obviously, you need more. Two-family special permit by itself, not part of a multifamily, and so what we're doing is basically the same thing here. We're more limit, we've provided new use regulations for a two-family, updated that. Multifamily still over here with a different set of use regulations.
So three and four, following the table on the next page, those are what, those are why this is in this section, because we're limiting it, we have buffer zones, we have setbacks, and then the parking spaces that are not in the bylaw right now. Because there was my understanding, groups wanted some limitations on two-families on 40,000 square feet.
Where am I getting lost here?
So letter C is all about one-two-unit dwelling, two-family dwelling. It's by itself, it's not part of a multifamily at all.
Okay, well, that's why I'm confused as to why it's in the multifamilies.
Because we, this whole section was to update both the definitions and use requirements for single two-family by itself and also multifamily. Because when we were talking about what we were going, what's the definition of a multifamily? Is it more than one? Is it more than two? And when we've had previous discussions, we were talking about two units and saying, well, do we want to be doing anything with two-unit dwellings at all, two-family units? And that's where we got to where we are, that we were doing revisions both for two-families and for multifamily.
That part I get, I just, it just seems out of place here to me.
So it's in here because of, it's in here really because of three. So right now, you can put a two-family, you can kind of pop it down anywhere. But here, now that we're kind of regulating what has to be, meaning there has to be a side setback, there has to be, you know, has to be a minimum setback, all these setbacks, and then the maximum block coverage. We're hoping that that gives it some kind of regulation.
Well, I understand the regulation. Again, I just found it odd that it was in the middle of the multifamily section.
So here's, so...
I'm not really sure where else we could put it unless we did a footnote to it, or unless we added one dimension.
In the schedule of uses, or at the end of the schedule of uses, we have the density requirement, I would have thought.
We have to add.
It would have been in that section as well, but...
So we want to make sure there's no confusion. So we have a definition outside of this multifamily bylaw. We have a definition of a duplex and a definition of a two-family. Is that going to be...
It's in these definitions right here.
Correct.
We changed that to a one definition.
Yeah, if you look at page three at the top, there's a definition of dwelling, two-families slash duplex. First definition on page three.
We didn't care if they were side by side or on top of each other, that's why we...
So again, excuse me, the legislative task team is, just somewhat confused. Section two proposed multifamily bylaw, that's where these definitions are, right?
Right, in... Sorry, go ahead.
So outside, let's assume outside of this multifamily bylaw definition.
But this is the general definition.
You want me to get it?
Okay. So whether it's in here or not, we have a definition of two-family, duplex?
Yes. All these definitions are going in the huge definitions section of the bylaw.
So when you have a duplex on 40,000 square foot lot, we're going to go by these definitions whether they're general or they're here.
Well, they're, they're going to be, the notation here will be saying something like, the following definitions in chapter 167-3, condominium, dwelling, dwelling detached, single family, yada, yada, are referenced in 167-3. So someone who wants the definition of those terms, in, when they're looking at this particular section, will have to look at 167-3 for the exact definitions. Those definitions will apply for the entire bylaw, including this part on two-families and multifamilies.
If you go back to section one, those are the ones we crossed out.
Okay, so I'm guessing I may have here, this might be answering my question. So a duplex on 40,000 square foot lot containing two units is not a multifamily dwelling?
Correct, it's because we have a different, we have a distinct definition.
That was the point I was trying to get to.
Yeah, there's a distinct definition, it's three or more for multifamily, two is its own thing.
You know how we said we were going to update some of that section?
No, I didn't. I'm lost. What was, what were they?
There were a couple of things that, in the site plan review section, we were going to update.
Yeah, those were the ones that, I just, yeah, just check with your father. Those are, yes. So we wanted to have the, oh, a specific reference to the subdivision rules and regulations which we have. We wanted to have the written comments.
Periodically.
Period, oh, yeah, periodically, exactly. That allows them to, to appear with these.
And the other item that we talked about changing just for the site plan section, when they submit the plans, was to have them submit electronically? Because right now, it says that you need seven copies.
I don't remember that, Gordon, but that doesn't mean it wasn't said. So, but that's under 28?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we can make that change.
That, that way, when we get the plans in, right now, nobody can, in town hall, has the ability to scan.
And you want it periodically, right? Because you don't have it under 28.
Nobody has the ability to scan the plans that we're getting in. So if we get, we require them to be electronic, at least then we can send them around and post them on the website when the things come in, so everybody can review it.
Section 14, we did a town hall and had interviews.
The problem you have is electronic, so if you need to scale something, you can't. So if you need, for instance, if you're doing a site plan, it comes in an electronic format, you can't do a scale.
Well, yeah, you can, because you'll have to blow it up to the scale that one inch does equal.
We have to, we have to get a plotter and have it print full size.
And the town would have to buy some sort of plotter and paste that, so...
I'm not saying wipe away the seven. I'm saying in addition to.
I, you know, as long as there is some...
We have a plotter in the other town, and I still ask, I always want it in PDF form so that we can store it, nothing else.
As long as you get a vote for it.
Yeah, I mean, just like we did for the 40B, we got everything all electronic, but there were, obviously, we had paper copies.
Because of the great character, isn't it? It's brilliant, it's terrific.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't hurt your back as much.
On the D in our chart for the density?
Where are we talking about?
Page five?
Okay, thanks.
Where we talk about it being in the concept plan, later on in that section, we're not saying here that you need to create these lots as lots, but they have to assign that particular amount of land, meeting all the other requirements. So in that case, we're looking for like dashed outlines of that single lot?
Yes, yes. So we have contiguous upland lot area required. And then, so do you want under 11 on that same page, where it's where we reference the concept plan, do you want the area to be defined with dash line?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, just, just so it defines each...
Anybody else? Any more comments, questions, revisions?
No, I don't. Under definitions, a lot discrepancy between a lot and a parcel. And I see something in here that defines the lot and parcel, whether it be in a whole bylaw or just a small family dwelling. Is your definition in general on a lot?
So I thought that I was careful in only referencing lot in this, because I don't want to get into lot versus parcel, but I might not.
You did, you did, but the... What is the definition of a lot? Is it going to be the 160,000 square feet for four bedrooms or four bedrooms?
Yeah.
I know.
It's 10 acres.
It's 10 acres, so...
For a multifamily.
A lot of confusion. No, I didn't, I'm just bringing it up.
For the, for the concept plan, we use the term exclusive use areas instead of parcel or lot.
Correct. But there's a lot of interpretation on lots and parcels. Is there a way to clarify that?
Well, okay, where are we using the word parcel?
Where are we?
Yeah.
Not using it.
Okay, so if we're not, if we aren't using the term parcel, we don't have to define.
We're looking at lots, but you're looking at 40,000 square foot.
Yes, yes.
But if you're looking at 10 acres, as I said, the lot has to have 10 acres.
The lot has to have 10 acres, but you also, the dwelling unit has to be on a 160,000 square foot.
Devoted area, which is not, we're not calling parcel.
Right, we're calling it the exclusive use area.
I mean, we've got a definition in, under 167-3, as lot, a single area planned in one ownership defined by meets and bounds or boundary lines in a reported deed or recorded plan.
It doesn't limit it to any particular size.
Right, it's simply, it could be 5,000 square foot lot, we have them in town.
As long as some clarification.
Well, parcel does not have a definition in our bylaws. If there are places in our bylaws that parcels mention, that may be something else we need to weed out, but it's not, if parcel isn't mentioned in these sections concerning two-family or multifamily, then it doesn't apply.
Okay, but if you, what you just said, there's a definition of a lot.
Yeah.
But each multifamily development must have at least 150 feet of lot width.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the small, it gets very confusing. It's the minimum, but you've still got a lot.
160, 120, and 40 are not lots at all.
Square foot.
Right.
That's the square foot.
And that's just, that's exclusive.
I just want to make sure.
So the 150 is, and it has to go back, I think, 100 feet, maybe 150 feet.
But that's the access area.
But that's, that's your 10 acres.
As long as that confusion... As long as that confusion is, is out. You know, we're listening at some meetings, and there's a lot of confusion between these lots.
There is, and so when I, when I, when I do complete requalifications and zoning bylaws, the first thing we do is we change every single parcel to lot, so there's no difference between a lot and parcel. And so here, we're careful, there's no parcel.
I mean, is your problem there?
Yeah.
So Amy, on, on page five, if you go to number seven, should we say each two-family or multifamily structure within the multifamily development must have 150 feet of frontage on a public or internal drive within its exclusive lot size?
No, because then, because what was, because you could have, remember, you can have the 10 acres with 150, and then you can, and it can go back, because we want the development to be that.
No, no, but, yeah, we're allowing that with the internal drive, to go back. What I'm saying is, if somebody puts in this long internal drive, is their exclusive zone have to have the 150?
No, the structure has to have it, so, yeah, it does, but it's the structure that we care about.
So, I'm making this up, so let's say if there's three structures, we've got to have at least 450 feet of frontage. If you've got four structures, you've got to have at least 600 feet of frontage. If it's five structures, you've got to get 750 feet of frontage.
Is that necessarily going to be on a public way?
No, it could be on the internal drive.
It could be on, or internal drive.
But, but that's.
It says public way.
Exactly, yeah. You're going to, on the concept plan, you have to do that, you have to show the 160,000 square feet. You have to show all of that on the concept plan.
But that's not going to be a formal lot, that's going to be, you know, to show that. This is what it means.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lesson in conjecture.
So Amy, if you have a two dwelling unit, so other multifamily development requiring 8,000, that was a single lot, it's all 4,000.
Right.
Right, that's, because that's how we have it basically right now, you need more acreage for a multifamily.
So, I think the, the give or take there is if you, if you do the 40,000, you know, here, you can do, you know, two fours and then add two, so you'd be, you'd, you're adding one.
Even though a single lot only requires 40, you can have multifamily still on it.
Yeah.
So, I think I got to, just to clarify.
That was my question, I had a focus on that.
So each two-family or multifamily structure within the multifamily, it must have 150 feet of frontage on a public way or internal drive. Are we saying they need, so what we're saying is, within those designated hash lines, they need to show 150 feet per structure. Not that you have the equivalent of road frontage that equals 150 per building. It has to be designated within those hash lines as 150 feet in front of the building.
Because that's.
That was my question, Rob.
So if, if, for example, if you had a multifamily development that spans 10, that spans 10 acres on a, on a public way, you would need to show, you were going to put up four structures, you would need to show 150 feet on that public way for each structure. If you were going to, which is a more likely situation, if you were going to go in to a property and create an internal drive, then you showed 150 on the internal drive.
Within the hash lines per structure.
So you call the internal drive a public drive?
No, it's a public way or an internal drive. So an internal drive is not a, it is not a public way or a private way. However, the way that we've drafted this, the planning board will determine, based on subdivision rules and regulations. So essentially, it will have the drainage and the grade and all the things that the planning board would require for a subdivision roadway. So it's not just going to be a gravel, you know, drop, it's not going to be gravel and tiny, it's, it's going to meet the subdivision rules and regulations.
But, but a structure up to four dwelling units still only needs 150 foot frontage?
Right, on 160,000 square.
That's the given, that's the given, okay.
Okay, so I just want to, I just want to make a comment, and, and I, you know, it's going to come up at town meeting. Of course, this is, this is going to be an interesting town meeting, at least coming from. And I'm not going to speak for, for the town, I'm not going to speak for any individuals. I, I just want to say that I'm not here to say what I want or what anyone else wants. I'm here to do what's best for the town. And the question that's going to come up at town meeting that I can foresee is, what kind of wiggle room do we have within this to prevent a 40B from coming in?
No, no.
No.
Correct, that's, I, I wanted that to be a clear answer when that.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter what zoning you put in.
And I understand that. So, would we be better as a town, having something where we can work with the developer, where the town gets something out of, whether it's open space, whether it's something that's, that's done within the town, something that the town can benefit from, rather than a developer coming and saying, you know what, I don't want to meet these requirements, I'm going to straight to 40B. And I'm not saying it's, I'm, I'm just looking for law, I guess.
What you're asking me is, is there enough incentive in here for a developer to not go to a 40B?
I guess that's a simple question.
I don't know that.
I think in some of the discussion we had, this was the first step, the women in multifamily, and then potentially look at a cluster development, which would instill laws. Okay, if you come in, if they want to cluster it with some reductions. And that can be discussed initially, but they decided that the best way is to clean this up first.
First step.
But the reduction that the developer's getting is if he's going to do this, he only needs.
Less road.
Yeah, the road, the roads, you need 300 feet of road, basically, to put in the units.
Because you can do it on both sides.
Yeah. So his, his road, when he just got cut down, that's one of the biggest costs, and now he can do four families, you know, two four families on 10 acres.
Right, and the benefit to having a developer work under this bylaw rather than a 40B is we have a buffer zone around the entire, so there's a lot of protection for butters. You're not allowed to have an internal drive within a certain amount of feet from a butter, things like that. So you have a developer that can build market rate, structure market rate units, sell those market rate units, but still protect the butters that are there already. Whereas a 40B, they will come in and they'll tell, they'll just tear down a new tree and put as much as they can in.
But there's nothing stopping somebody coming in with a, favoring a 40B, or a, or a 40B, and asking.
And negotiate the butters.
Correct.
I think that cleans it up considerably.
I just think to clear up Rob and my question, is somehow to specify the 150 feet of frontage on the internal or public way has to be within the hash lines, I don't know, in their exclusive space or something. Just to, just to clarify, because it was the same question.
Show 150 feet, you know.
On the concept plan.
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable.
Because we asked the same question two different ways, so.
Yeah, the whole idea here is to make it as simple as possible, so.
So, I was thinking, under section 11, within the exclusive use areas as required under number 11. Under subsection 11, so something like that.
Number seven?
Yeah, so at the end of number seven, you could say, you know, it says 150 feet of frontage on a public way or internal drive within the exclusive use areas as required in subsection 11. And then under subsection 11, at the end, we have exclusive use areas shown, we can find with dashed lines on the plan.
Anything further on that subject?
Well, the.
Are we going to talk about COVID?
Yeah, the board needs to talk about COVID a little bit, if they want to, so. I don't need, and maybe doesn't need to be here for that.
Talked about it enough.
Thank you.
And I think I forwarded you the, that email, right?
Yes, about.
The hotline?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And reviews them.
I know one thing that I wanted to talk to the board about was the work from home. I don't want, I don't think we need absolute every single detail done with, but if we're going to both allow and maybe be required in the sense of whether it's the governor's office or whether it's the federal government that pushes hard for us to have as many people as possible work from home. Obviously, some jobs where, you know, the public safety, public works, there's no work from home thing. But, and we're probably going to need to do something later on when we get back to quotation marks normal. But what I'm thinking along the lines is that a department head has to make the request of the board selectman for the individual to work from home, the circumstances for it. Now, there may be particular circumstances for a particular employee, in the sense of they have a medical situation, whether it's a family member or whether it's themselves, and we, but it may be also more general in the sense of if we get to a situation that it's preferable to have people work from home, they can simply say, per the advice of the CDC or the feds or the state, I'm asking that this individual be allowed to work from home. So that's something from the department describing the circumstances of why the request is made. Two, obviously, it has to be a situation where they can't, in the sense of both the technology exists for them to work from home, and we're working on that, and that there's work that they can do at all, in the sense of, as an example, they can't handle the paper tax bills that come in the mail. This is, I'm not picturing the collector's office, but using as an example is that a lot of our work still relates to paper. They may be, you know, this, you know, I'd like this person to work three days out of four at home, or two days out of five, or whatever it is, so that there may be some internal stuff in the building or other buildings where paperwork still needs to get done, and they need to actually be in the office to do that. So, you know, describe what work they're going to be able to do, but also point out what work they're not going to be able to do. Three, that that person has to log in, in the sense of there's some mechanism for Jane or Joe to go, say to the department head, okay, it's nine o'clock, I'm here, you know, ready to go at my computer, and then at three o'clock, hi, I'm logging out, done for the day. So what we want to avoid is a couple of things. One, there's some tallying of when they're actually at work. Two is we want, and part of that is to avoid dealing with the Fair Labor Standards Act. We don't want a situation that someone from the outside or inside says, well, hey, I can call Jane or Joe at five o'clock, I know they're at home, I want them to do work. No, they're limited to those hours they're working. Because in terms of payroll, in terms of the federal and state guidelines, we've got to follow those. So they're at work, they're at work, and when they finish for the day, they're done. We don't get to call them up, no more than we would if they were working here in the building. It's four o'clock, everybody's out, and then at five o'clock, they say, hey, I need to come back and work tax bills or something. And the next, the other part of it would be that the employee has to provide a synopsis. I don't want them spending an abnormal amount of time doing this, because I want them to do actual work, but they have to provide a synopsis back to the department head to say, here's what I did during today. It might be simply, you know, it might be only one task, I went, you know, I dealt with all these emails or whatever else, but if, we need to be able to provide some assurance to the public, to the board, to the department head, that work is actually getting done, and that we're not having people simply go home, you know, hit the key and say, okay, I'm here, and then they don't have to do anything for six hours, and they hit another key, and they say, I'm done, and nothing happens. I know that's been a point of tension before, when we've had other instances, when, you know, we've had situations and maybe we've had to have employees work from home. Those are the basics, I'm sure we would get into the specifics maybe as this situation moves on, and then more so when we get back to normal, but that would be a framework to do something like that.
It's almost as verification that the people are actually working at America Beach.
Well, I could work at the beach.
So, so with the new phone system, are they able to transfer the phones to their cell?
We were able to, I believe, to do that for in the lot.
Well, I guess the first part of that, do we agree with the, the department heads making that decision? They still would be sending them to us, they say, okay.
Well, I think, yeah, the board, it's Sutkin's decision, okay, I don't, I think the department head has to come to the board.
Well, we can do that as long as we have department heads still.
Right.
I mean, this thing is so fluid that it's going to change from week to week at the outside.
Yeah.
But I think it's reasonable, if the whole thrust here is to contain it, this is how we get it then.
I mean, there'll be some people who, as, you know, again, I'll pick on the collector's office, somebody's got to come in here and actually physically open the bills. We need the cash flow, if nothing else. So, but that person may not have to come in every day, or they might rotate, so that Jane does it on Monday, Joe does it on Tuesday. They work out some sort of system along those lines.
So, can you move on?
Yeah, if you could tonight, because we have one per, we've already mentioned a lot of, and, you know, I basically buy executive fiat, even though I don't have executive fiat set high to this, because we knew what the circumstances were and it made sense. We have another individual, another department, who has a family situation that she's asking, and I'll get the department head to send something formal to work from home, and get that set up. And then, I mean, we can't do it until everybody's computer, either the computers they have now or the computers that they might get, if they don't have, you know, we have somebody, for instance, has an iPad, we have people who have computers and operating systems that are perfectly fine for their home use. They not, may not be capable of handling what we need them to do. I'm waiting for Caesar to give me the minimum specs for that. So that if we have Jane or Joe, and they only have an iPad, and it's not going to do the trick, I know the Board of Health has money available, we talked about that this morning, they should be able to order a couple laptops. I don't want to be buying a huge number, but it's going to be, you know, coordinating, who needs to work at home, or who should be able to work at home, what do they have? Okay, if they don't have the required equipment, then what do we have to do to get the required equipment to them? At the same time, that Caesar works with the individual employees, so that if and when we want them, or we make a decision to have them work from home, it's already set up. You know, he's already tested it out, everything works, we've tried it out, done. So that if the governor says, I'm doing a stay in place, then we're ready to go.
Okay, and who?
So, just to, if he's, if he's looking at equipment, then I think he should be looking at laptops that we can go to a document station, so this replaces, eventually can just replace what they have, because I saw.
You mean, where, you mean in here?
So they, so they can sit down the machine, they get the keyboard, they've got their screen, and they're all set to go. So something that we're looking, where we can buy compatible document stations.
Okay, that makes sense.
To replace their equipment that they have here. I'm not sure that everybody, out of the 25 licenses that we talked about, I'm not sure that everybody's actually going to be able to work from home.
There's certain things that you've got to be hands on, you can't do it over the mail.
I mean, you might be able to check your email and things.
Well, and anything that's on the server will be able to check.
Right, I mean, if it's a laptop that we have here, it should be integrated as a, through the VPN, and they should have access to the server, so that's, that's not an issue. It's the ones that they use in their own personal equipment to log, because that's what Caesar's trying to do with that software, is to allow them to use that.
Yes, and I think, I think you're right, I mean, we do have a regular cycle of purchasing equipment, and I think your point is good in that, as we, you know, in future years, when we're buying new equipment to re. as we, you know, in future years, when we're buying new equipment to replace the desktops that we have, we convert them to laptops with the docking station, so it makes it possible to, for them, to simply, they bring it home. We don't have to worry about whether they have the right equipment at home.
That's what's all trending anyway, is to... Okay, I don't want to spend any more time with the guys.
Well, so what do you, what do you want for a motion?
If you could just vote, I mean, I've described to you what framework policy I would like to set up. If you would vote to approve the framework, unless something else happens, we'll see each other again on Tuesday. If there are details that need to be filled in, we have time to do that. I mean, I, again, as with many other things, we're doing this a little bit on the fly. We'll smooth out the rough edges as we move along.
I'll make the motion to approve the framework of the work from home policy.
I'll second it. Can join the discussion, Paul in favor?
I didn't, I talked to you all about town meeting, town election. I don't think there's anything to do now. I think we'll have an update as to what might be possible or what's coming down the pipe when we see each other on Tuesday.
Okay, can, I ask that Charlie send a letter to our elected officials and ask them to bump up the timeframe of the legislation that they're looking forward to cover us?
Sure.
Was that...
Yeah, motion.
Second.
And I'm working with Caesar, and I think that Gordon has some ideas too, to the, what we're allowed to do with the open meeting law in terms of meetings and being able to do things remotely has expanded, there are, there are still some requirements in terms of audience being able to be there virtually, one way or the other. And if we're doing hearings, that they be able to participate. I wasn't so worried about this week so much, obviously, I'm not sure if the board realizes, but we did cancel the chapter 40B for tomorrow. I've talked to Gordon about that, the developers in, we're all finding clocks won't start until May for that, assuming we're able to start. But, I, you know, there's a lot of conversation going on with my colleagues about, you know, are they using WebEx, are they using Zoom, whatever. And what I want to do is go through all their comments, see what's working, work with Gordon to see what he can bring in, and so that we can, whether we're physically present but can't have people here, that there's a way for the audience to be, see it live. If we're doing everything virtual, or a mix of physical space and virtual space. So, you know, if I'm not here, can I get in while the board's, you know, physically, or vice versa for that matter. I'm here and the board is scattered for some reason, that we can get that mix set up. Again, public being able to watch, hear the proceedings. And then the last one is, if we can't have the audience here, but we have to have it, participation, that's another degree of difficulty, but it's doable. I just, we just need to look at the software packages.
See which is the best vehicle.
So if we're all going to be remote, I would suggest we go with Zoom. So we would all have to use our phone or iPad or whatever it is, log in, log into the meeting, and you get to see, there's a little picture, a picture of you and whoever the moderator... Moderator is picking who's, who's speaking. And then you could have a chat window off to the side where people can get comments. That's the people that are actively participating in. The system that I tried out last night is that you can, I can set up, I can hook up to their camera over there with the HDMI port, I have a wireless device. So we could have a laptop here, and we could take in comments from Facebook Live when it's time for us. We could ask for comments, comes up, it's about a three-second delay. Just have to have access to the wireless network for that device.
Can area 58 broadcast live?
They can't broadcast live right now. Not, not from this room.
Yeah, Caesar was working with them, I think, for more in the downstairs in the selectmen's meeting room, which of course, then the problem is they were trying to do the social distancing at the same time.
It's, it's really the, if we want public participation, that it's not so much the, their access, them broadcasting live, it's, we need to broadcast on a platform where we can take input at the same time. So I have that ability with that setup. I was going to try it tonight, but I ran out of time with the other meetings.
But there, so there are possibilities of making it work.
And we could do the Zoom with that too, that was going to be my next test.
So are you contacting area 51 to factor this right on to the...
Yes.
Well, I, I think if somebody's going to be here, we still would want them to film if the building's shut down.
As long as we can get them to come out. I mean, so is that issue too.
Right.
Well, yeah, if we're doing, you know, if we're doing completely virtual, if we're all in different places, we're not in the physical space, we don't need area 58 here.
But we can broadcast that to Facebook or YouTube, and they can download the file and upload it to their channel afterwards. So I was looking at all those possibilities at three o'clock in the morning.
Well, at least we were doing something at three in the morning, I was just trying to go back to sleep.
And just an update on the, because we're still a little bit, so the free lunch has run into an issue. So there's a number of students, about 25% of the students at the Halifax Elementary are qualified for free or reduced lunch. So right now, the school district is not providing those lunches. There was a survey sent out to some of those people, I'm not sure if all of them, or what the, what the, what the survey output was, I don't have those details. But we did receive a request for about 30 lunches. And we thought we were going to be able to do that starting tomorrow. But with contract issues and union issues, we're not going to be able to do that. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to do that till Friday, so...
Are you talking Halifax now, or school?
Yeah, Halifax at least. So the Masonic Lodge building has offered the kitchen for tomorrow. And we offered to donate the money for the lunches, we posted on Facebook. And the idea was that we would supplement the cost, pay for the lunches. We asked people to reach out to us to let us know who needs them. And the fire chief and the police chief, volunteers from HOPS, volunteers from the school committee have been through quarry, and if we need to deliver lunches, we'll deliver lunches. Everyone that has worked on this issue from the town of Halifax has worked really hard and have brought together a solution. It's just on the school district bureaucracy that we're being held back. So tomorrow, we're just going to try to supplement two lunches for Wednesday and Thursday with the hopes that by Friday, the town's, the school department's ready to roll. And if they're not, we'll do it again on Friday.
You might mention that they are offering the meals on wheels for the elderly.
So we haven't linked in with Sue about that. That was another opportunity that I was thinking about, about having items delivered, if, if we could help out in that way too. Because I know the HOPS people have reached out to Sue, and they were quarried for that purpose as well, to help out on deliveries.
Obviously, as the day, the week continues, I'll try and keep the board informed. I mean, we do have, you know, discussions during the week. I mean, I think, again, Gordon's been right on those people, but I think everybody else. I think, you know, whatever departments we've been talking with, everybody's understanding, look, it's not the regular situation, we're all going to do something a little bit out of the ordinary or embedded on the fly. But I, I don't think I've heard almost any complaints from anybody about, you know, how we're doing things.
There's one thing, we can offer roads for toilets, you're supposed to keep them below ten.
We're able to get the ticket.
I know where it's, I know where it's stashed, and I'm not telling them. For five o'clock.
Well, six, six on Monday.
I was trying to give you some extra credit. You're probably staying back with this. Setting up outside so that, you know, we could follow through with our closure and still make it as reasonably convenient for people as we could. Just far, it seems to be working.
I think, you know, the, I think the good and bad of the long term will be, I think we will get better frameworks in place. I think the other part of it is, it's like the shut-in for the snowstorms. Okay, the first day it's adventure, and then it starts being a grind, and then people start, you know...
Getting a little, you know, antsy.
We'll see.
All right, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, I'm good. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.